We have.
The United States of America, come to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, I've never got it, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda in the next.
I'll say it. Motion second up, discussion, no holes in favor, say aye. Well, same side, motion.
We're back on our regular hours again, so. Concrete patching later this fall yet, but that's on our agenda. Those are all bleeding and doing shoulder on our shoulders and. Kind of building shills back out for harvest. That's what I'm starting to talk about falling yet, but it's going to be here, so. Working on any reports yet to get them done before next week, so. There goes, you guys had some stuff on the gym, I think I briefly saw most of projects or what was that you guys had on there?
Just said road project. Jackie and I, conference call with John Danos and Amy. And Heidi Cool from Northern Securities. We gotta get some projects identified, we've got to get some money. That certified by December first. Just wondering where you're at, how close you are with projects, can we certify some debt?
Well. If we're using tip for everything. Other than. Timing, we can do local lettings with tip, so we don't need to follow D O T schedule, we can do things a little bit faster. If I have the time to send stuff together and what was the dollar amount you were looking at?
As far as the total was five or six?
Six million is what we're putting in the the plan as.
How much you sort of.
What we gotta get, was it one? No.
At least two points.
Two point seven total, one point three for one oh five, then one point four.
Oh, one point three for.
To pay back your five trust funds for the one oh five. And then, yeah.
But that's just one year, we just won't go over that.
Yeah, that but that's, yeah, we gotta get at least that down this year.
So one point four.
At least this year.
Say more than that.
If you can get more of that, then that's fine.
Well, I mean, between the two road projects we had discussed earlier this year. And that was before we kind of really knew what oil prices were doing, I can't remember why I turned this to as prior before the first of the year, can't remember, was it? You know, we had, I initially thought, put an estimate together for, I think, three ninetieth. West of Warbler to sixty five was on one project and the remainder of Thrush going from one oh five to state line, I think those are the two projects we put in there for two point nine million. Using. I think we were, I guess I'd have to look here. If we were doing milling fills and coal and place recycles, that would have been two point nine million. Those are simple projects to put together if we choose to do those. They would be easier to put together than any bridge project or covert project just based on. Turnaround with. Clearances, the bidding shouldn't be too bad, putting plans together is what takes me the most time.
That's right.
So I'm still putting plans, I'm working on plans right now for D O T lettings that I need to put in February, so. In between trying to put these plans together, I'm still working on a plan set for Mitchell County, a plan set for Worth County and then. And any kind of bridge stuff I try to put together yet, which I don't even know if I'll make any February or March lines now, any bridges, because I'm just too backed up with with everything else. So, but we could theoretically. Put. These coal and place recycle projects in here after, I could reevaluate the numbers to find out how close they are based on oil prices now. I wonder what they'll do now that they have to be real with asphalt to know. But. Those are possibilities. I mean, did the projects need to be actually left in contract awarded by December first, because that's.
No.
We just gotta get it.
But then if we have debt, we're paying interest and the quicker you can.
Because you're not gonna, you're not gonna do any construction, it's. Contractors can do it, so. What?
It's.
When you certify debt, what is the actual certification that this is what we estimate it's going to be, so we're certifying it, or we have to have a contract?
We have debt.
So you gotta pay for it, right? So if there's some constructive.
No.
Would basically have to know. What it's going to cost to do those projects and we have to go certify that debt and borrow that money.
Right, so we'll have the money. Money to be sitting.
Like prepay.
Yeah.
So does that mean we have to have a contract signed? Normally, so we need.
Which that's the, that's the scary part, because if you're, you know, like you're bid letting for what the February stuff, the D O T stuff you're planning for, if they end up.
More.
Yeah, over and.
We have to have the difference.
Doing it, then.
I think the way the A N A report's looking right now will have adequate funding to take care of overages.
But if it is way over.
We'll see.
Why would you want to do it?
As we can, I mean, if you're certifying maximum dollars.
Well, yeah, but we hate to make double for something if it's.
Oh, no.
One more year to get.
I don't think. But I guess I can't really.
Right.
Guarantee that either.
Right.
So what you're looking for is really, I mean, we can have plans, I shouldn't say this. We could hopefully have plans put together by December first with an engineer's estimate that would tell us what the numbers are doing. And say, here's what the engineer's estimate is for these projects to be let in, whether it's December, January, February, whenever they are let. I guess I just need to know, do we have to have the project let in a contracted place to certify debt, or do you need an engineer's estimate to certify that?
I think we can just do the engineer's estimate, certify the debt.
It seemed to me that's what happened with all the other, all the other tip dollars in the past when in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, that. Jim had put together estimates for what the projects were going to cost us, and that's how much money that was borrowed was he, was through the estimates. And then whatever we ended up letting was either less or more, there was always money there to cover that.
And we just gotta hope that those estimates come in where you're putting them at, so that we.
Well, I'll try to be generous enough that we shouldn't have any issues with that, I'm not like, can't guarantee what the markets are going to do now and then, but. And we could, we know what asphalt prices were this year and I can't expect them to be a whole lot higher next year, I mean, there's going to be some inflation, but maybe the prices can download a bit too, based on the market maybe settling a little bit. I can definitely get you estimates on what you think it's going to cost you and then start working on some plans too.
I would say so, because if, because Thrush north of three ninety is already part of the D O T.
That's already being designed, that's preliminary funds were turned in a couple of weeks ago on that one.
So we could either continue.
We could finish Thrush to the state line from one oh five north. I mean, I estimated if, I don't, so I think a milling fill is the right way to go, because we get reflective cracking right away, but. It's a, it's a quick way to put a new surface down and if we use the high pro, if we use a milling fill with high pro, that's one point five million estimated, or at least when I put this together. If we do a cold in place recycle with a three inch lift, then we're talking two million dollars. We can do a four inch overlay with fiber for two point one million, but. We would change the design of the four inch a little bit, that we wouldn't have all the smaller joints anymore and we put the fiber in it and probably, I don't know if everybody's ready for that one yet or not.
The, actually, I guess the big question is, is the ones that were on that list you gave, that's the ones we need to go after.
Yeah, and that's the ones I'm having it right now.
Okay, because that's. Yeah. Going to be a part of the urban renewal plan. And then we can go forward with those.
And that was three ninety, three ninety seven miles at. Two million dollars, at least when I put this together and then Thrush was four and a half miles, that just. I mean, we could have.
Right.
Three point nine million dollars, I, I think we were looking at probably using a two point nine nine, where we're going to do a milling fill. On three ninety and then a cold and place recycle on Thrush, and that total was two point nine million. If that's, that doesn't seem right. No, I'm sorry. It was two point nine million for cold and place recycle from. Cold place recycle for three ninetieth and milling fill on Thrush north, that was where the two point nine came from. But we're doing cold and place recycle on Thrush from three ninetieth north of five, we could continue the cold and place recycle north. More of our state line too, that'll change some numbers, but we can, we can certify more debt, that's not a problem. We can change the construction practices to do more.
Right, like if long as we have those estimates and we can say, these are the projects we're going after, it's going to be part of the plan, the estimates, get it out for bid and as, you know, for spring or summer.
Yeah.
Then we can certify that debt.
I think last time, like I said, I think what we had was engineer's estimates, and they were more detailed estimates than. Than what we had here, we had probably knew what the project bid items were and knew exactly where they were, the the costs were, are pretty close to what the D O T was bidding out.
Yes.
I mean, I can definitely have that kind of stuff done by December first, even more, you'd want it before than anything like that.
Yeah.
We can, we can look at something in November.
Yeah, like first part of November, if you get something, at least get us, us, the most accurate numbers you can get, then we can.
To be able to certify, or I mean, to be able to issue debt before then, I'll have to ask Heidi.
Looking at doing for timing, but. That's, the one she gave us a couple of weeks ago. Yeah. Yeah, she wants to award bonds by October twenty fourth and issue them by November seventh. We might be a week past this now, but still, we're looking at being. Closed on the bonds and everything by Thanksgiving. So.
So. We can put estimates together pretty quickly.
Yeah.
We can fine tune that stuff, if that's what you need.
Yeah.
As long as we know what direction we're going with, and in fact, I think that even when we did the stuff in two thousand nine, I'm not sure that we even knew, and I wasn't here then. But I think they were still, at least in Mitchell County, when they were doing, they were bidding asphalt versus concrete, we just knew with dollars, we're going to fall. And that's all they needed to certify the devil's force, here's what we think it's going to cost, because, I mean, if you were going to certify debt for the courthouse, you wouldn't have a bid done, either you'd have estimates from a.
Right.
From the architects to use for your, so I think maybe we get by with estimates for me too, I can get estimates done, so the twenty fourth, they want to award them.
November, yeah.
Of October and award them.
Three, yeah, close on them in the, yeah, I'd award them in October, so yeah, well, my name, testaments will end in a couple of weeks.
All right. I can put some estimates together here. This week is pretty packed, next week I've got two days in my mouth for fishing, so the following week would be.
First.
Yeah, right.
Pretty close.
I'll be back in seven minutes. We can still have stuff. By the end of. I could promise. As far as estimates go, I can probably have something by the twenty sixth September.
But that list that you gave, wasn't that the estimate to start with?
Well, that was from back in December, yeah. Changed.
Right.
If you want to, we can add some more projects.
Well, it's just, if the, long as the oil prices and the asphalt prices or whatever have changed a ton. Fuel prices, I would see that being too far off.
No, I wouldn't think so.
Because, you know, we've, that was with part of the jump anyways, we've kind of been just maintaining, I think, but everything, in fact, worst case, fuel prices have actually come down a little, so.
Like I said, based on how the, the actual, you guys. Funded all of one oh five with funding that kind of kept my. Caro balance is pretty solvent, so we're, we're looking pretty good there, I mean, there's, there's money there too. Because I remember, I think when we talked about those, that one oh five project, I was going to throw money at it, you guys decided to borrow everything for it, so. That kept me pretty solid, and we haven't been able to get to a lot of things, and I wanted to as far as. Bridges and apartments yet, to spend money on, we've got the money. We'll be, we'll be okay, right?
Good.
Even if we have.
Get these roads going, then throughout the winter, if we can get some colors and stuff, bridges, boxes, whatever, rolling for spring, let bands do, you know, hopefully.
Yeah. Okay. I'll see if I can get something together for the twenty six through you guys. Give some estimates.
Updates on those coverts out there in Dirk.
Haven't seen him yet, I haven't, I haven't received him that I know of yet. Okay, so. I don't know what the whole of is, we've been on order for a long time.
Yeah, like everything else, it takes a long time to get it. Okay, just curious. Hopefully it doesn't fall right during harvest.
I think those survive.
Well, I know.
But yeah, you're all as far as replacing.
Yeah.
That should go pretty quick.
Okay.
Our guys can have that done in a couple of days at the most.
Okay.
Good.
So it took us a day and a while.
Okay.
I mean, I have a bigger fight.
Right. Okay, sounds good, any questions? You look like, yeah, that's, I'm going to go.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
All right, drainage.
Yeah.
Second. For the discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Second.
Well, second.
Moving second in any further discussion.
Aye.
Payroll. Moving second in for discussion.
Reports, Johnson.
Johnson missile.
Reports.
Oh. We can motion to approve the reports from the sheriff. Make a motion for new reports.
I'll say.
Moving second. Now. I'm going to ask for that.
Payroll verification.
All right, payroll eligible verification salary.
Okay, so. One of the.
Terry Dorsey.
And then the next one is Joel, and what I did was divide. Now, because we need somebody, the person that we were going to hire both through, so. We.
This one first.
Going together.
Okay.
Um, and then. So what he proposed is. Him being part time. At a higher rate right now, while there's nobody.
Right.
And then lowering it when. He's training.
Yeah.
And there's another person here.
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah.
We have, we have a request out, potential out, but if that one falls through, then we will probably go back square one and start searching again, so.
So anyway, what I did was divided his current salary by forty and fifty two, and that's the dollar amount I came up with. And he'll be getting, he won't be getting health insurance, because he's part time, but he'll be getting I personally, like, and all that stuff.
So.
If everybody's okay with that.
We're going to somebody.
That's why he go.
Yeah, I mean, it'll kind of be. Unfold and not uncalled to us, main job will still be advice hack and stuff.
Up to twenty hours.
So.
Motion to approve the payroll eligibility and salary changes.
Two second.
I'll second that.
For the discussion. Now.
Yeah, did you see the one, and then this came into it, yes. Yeah.
That's all on Johnson's own.
No, that's some report.
This is some.
It might have changed names again, no, that's a different one. Yeah, that's one that came in over my counter.
So do we have two?
Yeah.
Two, we're doing together.
Yeah.
Washington technology, mere management plans for Johnson South and then Summit Fork. L L P.
Washington knowledge of mere management plan.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Need for the discussion. Here, no, fair to say. Okay. That's big.
This one is. Building that hasn't been there forever, and so. He's wanting to. Not pay one bucks.
And it's gone. You don't know?
I don't know.
Steve Angus did.
I'm gonna stay here.
Steven, Steven Angus.
Yeah, we took it off, but it, it was still there in twenty nineteen.
But not for this tax.
Not for this tax.
No.
Okay. Mark Hill's rolled, so, okay, yeah, that's deep.
So we just asked him for a motion to.
Take a motion to. Wild tax abatement.
I'm making a motion along that tax abatement.
I'm saying it.
I'm moving second, I need further discussion. They're hearing all those better say aye. Close same sign.
And they'll probably be. Three more triple in.
Right.
They decide they don't.
I realize we don't have a building or any more.
City, city is one of them, I sent it to Jake, because I wanted to know if it was this year, if, if somebody should have been responsible for it yet, and I haven't heard back.
Okay.
So, and I don't know.
And I have anything yet. I, I have not heard, and then I know there was one or two with something within Tyler, we had twenty twenty one, that like Homestead should be there, but. It was entered after July first, because it came in on a postmark before July first, so the system recognized it evidently that it was entered after July first. But we put in the effective date of twenty twenty one.
Yeah, yeah, that makes it a legend.
It's the only thing they could say, that that's what happened.
Okay. Take care of it then.
We tried to figure it out.
Thank you, all right. More and lots of the thirty five, one oh five change site there, so we had it done last year. Went to bed up, when those couple people questioned about getting it done again this year, so, I don't know if I just get a hold of Jim again, see if they can do it, or. Probably is the best thing to do, Jim Conservation did it last year, so. They have the ability to do it or hire.
I think next, that's probably okay for this year, but next year, you probably better go to bids and get it done a little more.
They did a good job last year.
Yeah, they did fine.
But it looks not that great all summer.
Wow. Sweet cool, we're up. Yeah, it's just.
Engulfs the sign.
It does, that stuff gets tall.
Yeah.
So, and I know there's one law and contractor guy, or Morgan has asked about it. So.
Yeah, let's have, if conservation has time, just have them do it one more time and vet it out for next year.
I'll send Jim a message and ask him.
If they're out that way, doing something.
See if they're available.
If not, then we'll. Yeah.
Okay.
Did that process then sooner than later, I guess.
All right, okay. EMS discussion, I just had it kept on there. Had a couple texts and emails, people suggested that we would consider putting this up for an R F P.
I definitely think we should.
When we get to that point. I was going to bring that up.
Yeah, I got it, probably from the same person. I'm going to get, I'm going to work on an R F P, I found a couple that other counties in the state have used. And I'll take it to the committee on September twentieth, we're meeting again. And. Um, as they're okay with that, we'll bring it back to.
Yeah, I mean, it isn't, it isn't like, you know, voters are just voting whether they want to even.
Yeah.
Do the tax or not, so I mean, at that point, then we can.
Yeah.
I got something else, we got a couple of emails here, kind of a roadmap to EMS sustainability, and then the other one was from twenty twenty three legislative recommendations. And because we've got, because of geographical areas. We've got our western edge of three townships that are covered by Winnebago, have we kind of looked, and one of the things they suggested in here, that they'd like to have coming out in twenty three. Was the fact of working together with another county, because these things overlap this way, are we doing that?
We, we've met with Mason City, Forest City, and Lake Mills, all three, ambulance services that cover the county, and they had that discussion. And we don't intend on changing anything as of now, I know Lake Mills has been struggling for help and Forest City has as well. But we also haven't heard what their county has decided a hundred percent.
Right, they have the pastor saying.
Yeah, they're won't do the same process.
Process too, so.
You know, because, and they're even having questions on whether they're, why they're coming into Worth County or into Hancock County, right? So we don't know exactly where they're going to get to either.
Yeah, some of their public was saying basically, if we're paying for it, why are we going somewhere?
Always been tired to the fire districts, that's what's going to start, and like mills.
Yeah.
So you've come into those townships.
And there's always, I mean, there's always mutual aid when it comes to that stuff too, but it's, yeah, there's, but there has been some questions. Over there, I know that we've heard through their committee that the possibility of, well, if we're paying for it in our county, why are we supporting a different county? So, we're still, there's still discussions there. It, it may end up, you know, working together with them a little bit, or we may end up on our own too, we don't know yet.
I know that was one of the things that they're trying to get on the list for next year, because we can't be the only ones that have this problem.
We are.
And working together with the counties is a smart thing to do as far as I'm concerned, if it works.
There's probably eighty other counties that are having this problem, you know, the big counties are.
Pretty much every county.
The big counties you get, but the big cities, um, there, they seem to be getting by, because a lot of them have support from hospitals and that stuff too, but. That, that's the biggest thing, is we're the unique one, because we don't have a current transport service or a hospital. Every other one has one or the other in their county, so we are a little bit unique, right? So, yeah, we are, we are talking with them, we have been, we can, we'll continue to, because. If those areas were to change, I would, I think we have to get approval from the township trustees, because they set the ambulance service areas, the fire areas as well, well, we don't just. If they're invisible lines in the county, but they're established years ago, townships and the cities, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, that was the only, when I saw that EMS discussion came up, the only two things that came to mind was, I definitely think we ought to send it out for R F Ps. And I wanted to know where we, if we communicated, and I know that Terry's been talking to us quite a bit, and.
Yeah.
And if we communicated with Winnebago on this, because of the way they overlap over here, and three of our townships.
Yeah, so, like I say, it's all. Things walk in. Yeah, so, like I say, it's all, things will all get a little more.
Real.
Nail down once the election goes through.
Through the election.
Yeah. But no, what's really election, we, my committee's done, or not done, I should say.
Starting.
We're starting. Yeah.
Are you having public meetings between now and the election, a couple of them? Do you have those set?
We're gonna start having them, yes.
But you don't have the dates or?
Not yet. Just probably nail all those down with the twentieth when we meet again. Um, to go to basically, I think it was whole month in every community. And then let the, I'll probably go to most, all of them, Dan, whatever he can make, and then, uh. Those representatives from those fire departments will sit in with those town people as well. For those areas, I should say, any town's gonna be, we're kinda gonna do that, you know, area around those towns. That's our plan.
You know, if you guys have good messages or something, some couple suggestions would be.
I, no, I didn't. I didn't, I didn't see that come through, I just decided that is what we should do.
All right, FY twenty three budget amendments.
Okay.
Okay. I will make, I will recess the meeting and take a motion to open the twenty three budget amendment. Public hearing.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Move to second, any further discussion? Prose in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion will carry. The budget amendment hearing is.
Okay, I put together a budget amendment because we needed to, um. Have budget line items so that we could spend the.
Okay.
So, and there was some other stuff that I was looking over and wanted to cover a couple gaps. Um, juvenile justice is one of them, we've been having enough people in, um. Detained or whatever, so I wanted, I would like to put another ten thousand on that, I hope we don't spend it, but I just figured it'd be better to have it there when. It costs twenty five hundred to thirty five hundred when they are there for a month.
Yeah.
And, um, and, um, what's it, Eldora, is that the one we go to?
Yes.
They went up from fifty dollars a day to a hundred and fifteen dollars a day.
Okay.
So that changes things.
They're still cheaper in Waterloo.
And then the next thing, yeah, they are. Um, the next thing is miscellaneous maintenance repair, uh, we had gotten that estimate. For, it was over seventeen, and I figured I bumped that up to twenty if there's any.
Kind of more.
So that's in there now, and then the water and sewer, um, out of the seven hundred, we still have six hundred and eighty three by fifty three that hasn't been spent. Um, the capital projects, I put in the thirty three eighty eight five for, um, the cameras and locks and all that good stuff. And then, um, capital outlay, I had to take, since the stuff came so quick, I took the money out of capital outlay for, um. IT first because he had budget, so I have to put two hundred and seventy two, five thirty eight ninety four back for him. And then our, I don't know if you remember, our insurance ended up higher than I guessed. And so I would like to put another fifteen thousand in there for, um, that overage plus anything else that's bought during the year that we need to. Yeah. So that is the whole budget.
Okay. Coming up for a public comment. There any comment from the public? All right, and I will take a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
For sure.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I, both same side, motion will carry, a reconvene meeting. And I will take a motion to approve the FY twenty three budgetment, budget amendments.
Motion to approve the first year twenty three budget amendment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Then. Motion in second, any further discussion, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same time, motion will carry.
It's a resolution.
You wanna, it is a resolution.
It's not listed that way.
Oh, sorry.
I would take him. Lower.
Only.
Stone.
Bye.
It's maybe, aye, sorry. Nope, I was thinking probably that's what was, it wasn't listed that way, so. Okay.
Almost out of stuff.
Northland Security engagement letter.
I was gonna ask you guys if you had a better copy of this, I had scanned mine and.
That would be just on my, if I had it in email, I guess.
Cause this was part of.
She brought that too.
Yeah. So when she, um, proposed it. Or when she talked last time, she was, um, proposing an engagement to, which it doesn't tie us to that, but if we do have that. And if you read through it, it says that.
If we approve everything that engages out to do the work, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be my copy, I would have to, would be the one she brought.
Did you, do you still have it?
No, not.
I'm sure I got.
My stack must be at my.
Okay.
I just about grabbed.
It's not as pretty, but it'll.
Signature, right?
Yeah.
That's gonna say that's all they want, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I will take a motion to approve the engagement letter for Northland Security.
Oh my god, motion.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Moving second, any further discussion, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same time, motion will carry. She won't use the signs here.
Yeah, please. And the next one is, um. Central Iowa Tourism, we just talked to her not that long ago, and this is the new contract for this year.
All right, so I will take a motion to approve the contract for Central Iowa Tourism, with Central Iowa Tourism region.
Well, should we approve the contract?
In a second.
I'm second.
And move in second, any further discussion? There's none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side.
A lot of stuff.
Okay. That's, you know.
Morning. I finished up that revolving loan fund.
She was on muted, but.
Yeah.
No, she's lost her.
She must be on issue.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Okay, all right, that's fine, Melissa, we'll catch up with you later then, thank you. Uh, Chris is not on. Department had discussion. And, everybody. Mark could hear.
Well, did you see the message from Melissa?
Yeah. Since she can't make it work there.
Well, she sent another one that said, deny the board supervisors want to request another meeting with the architect.
Oh, yeah. Nobody else can?
Well, we can't.
Weird.
I don't, I thought it looked good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need another meeting.
No, bottom meter.
No, I was good with it, I just figured I needed to respond if we were happy, so.
Yeah.
You did a good job. Okay. Yep, Supervisor Weekly.
I didn't have anything this week.
Good.
I just had our conference call, we can discuss that with Rich, with, uh, Gavin Vanos and those guys, so.
So I have. I had, I were first element. Um, we have a new contract going around, I can't, I don't have, I like my notes on all this, but anyway, I did Greaves look it over, and he had some concerns on it, and. A lot of the other counties had concerns on it, but it's part of our plan that we have to have with. The state and federal government, and there was things in there that didn't like the verbiage we had. Um, some of the county attorneys don't really like it, but we're kinda, we have to do it, otherwise it, they probably wouldn't give us funding, um, so that will probably be coming. For signature, I think the electronic through me or not, we'd already approved it once here, probably a year ago.
Yeah.
It's been a process, and, uh. Really should meaning concerns of it really coming back to affect us financially as a county, but yet we are kind of on the loop if somebody had missed that funds, but. Liability wise, we have liability insurance, we have the oversight of the board, we have the oversight of the auditors and stuff, so. Should never be an issue where we come back to be where the county would have to pay back funds for what's going on, but. So, it will probably be coming around for, we approved it as a executive board and stuff, and so it'll be coming back for signatures from all the counties, so. I don't know if we'll get it on the agenda here, when it'll come, I haven't seen it yet this week, so. It will become, so I had that meeting, um, we did have a discussion on the IT deal, we've already talked, and we've got another offer out there to a guy, and, uh, we'll see how that goes, if not, we'll. Probably go back to square one or ahead on it or something, we don't really know, you have to figure something out. And if somebody knows, somebody that's really interested in my IT job. So, so that's all I had, um, I guess, so anything else for next week's agenda we're looking at?
Two districts for reclassification and annexation next week.
Okay.
So it might be a little longer next week.
Okay, that's one.
We're doing that.
Thirteen forty six.
Up there, that's right.
All right.
Oh. You get invited to our bureau.
Oh, yes, I did.
I think they're having us, uh, there's a meeting, I'm pretty sure they have us at separate times, we shouldn't be there, I'll double check.
Cause usually.
I'll check the trees out this weekend. Yeah, see, and I think they want us to be at separate times because you don't have anybody running against you, do you?
I don't have. You two guys.
Yeah.
Okay, I hadn't seen it there.
I do, and then they're, you know, Dan's running against me, so then they're gonna have him separately, and I'm assuming they're gonna have you.
Yes.
And I, I'm trying to juggle my schedule, cause I got something going on.
Have they emailed you about that meeting?
Yes.
But I'm pretty sure they're having us all separate, so we shouldn't be there at the same time. Something changes, sure, I'll let you, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Learn that, now there's not like.
All right, so nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
I'll second it.
Move in second, I think we're discussion, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion will carry, thank you everyone.